Like to call the meeting to order if we could please. Supervisor Wells, you leave us an invocation please sir.
Yes sir, let us pray. Dear only Father, as we gather here tonight in community, we ask that you guide and direct and teach us. Hold our hands, help us to get along, help us to understand each other. And bless each of us and our families, bless our servicemen and our service personnel, policemen and firemen. Those folks who give of their time to take care of us. Be with all of our teachers and the staff as they start a new year in school and our children. We ask that you keep them safe, wrap your arms around them and take care of them. We ask that you give us guidance all the time in all our lives, but especially as we meet to talk about things that are important to our community. We ask all these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman Lofton, you leave us in a pledge please sir.
Stand, face the flag for a pledge please. I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chair. Adoption of the agenda, are there any proposed changes?
No service, Chairman.
Alright, we're entertaining motion.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented is our second.
Second.
Seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Agenda is adopted as presented. Consent agenda.
Mister Chairman, unless there are some changes, I would move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Motion to approve as presented is our second.
Second.
And seconds, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Consent agenda is adopted. This is the portion of the meeting that we set aside time for citizens to comment on subjects that are on our agenda but not subject to public hearing. Did anyone sign up, Ms. Phillips?
Yes sir, Mister Chairman, Joy Kirk.
Ms. Kirk, welcome.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joy Kirk. I am a resident of the Back Creek District. I am the past president of the Frederick County Education Association and I am entering my twenty-fourth year as a Frederick County Public School teacher. I have spoken to you many times about Ailer Middle School and I think everyone sitting before me knows my feelings. But tonight I would like to appeal to your fiscal responsibility. I have attended school boards meetings for the past six years in my role as former FCA president. And I have attended the majority of the meetings held here regarding school funding and school issues. At one point, nine million dollars was offered for an addition to Milbrook High School for three hundred students. It was determined that that was insufficient funds for a three hundred student addition. The difference between forty-five point five million and fifty-two million is far less than nine million. So my concern is if you only fund a forty-five point five million dollar school, it will be built to the top standards for seven hundred and fifty students. And in a few years, as we grow, the school board is going to come to you and say we need money for an addition. And it is going to exceed the difference between forty-five point five million and fifty-two million. And our future taxpayers are going to pay the price. So if we are to be fiscally responsible, then I ask you to please fund fifty-two million dollars and build a nine hundred student capacity school to the best standards. Because I know and you know, it will probably exceed one hundred percent capacity at some point in the future before we build a fifth middle school. But why should we have to come and ask for an addition? Let's build the nine hundred capacity building now and be fiscally responsible to our future citizens, our future taxpayers. We know this is going to happen. It's reality. It's what happens in a growing community. So let's do the right thing now and save money. Because the reality is the longer we kick the can down the road, the more money the can is going to cost us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Katie Bockert.
Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Katie Bockert. I'm a resident of Winchester City, but I'm a teaching assistant at Frederick County Public Schools. Good evening. I was gonna come in front of you this evening and once again ask you to vote yes to build a new Ailer. Based on the fact that we need a safe, appropriate learning space of at least a hundred and sixty thousand square feet for our children, but I changed my mind. Then I thought I would remind you of the money that is brought into Frederick County from the numerous businesses employers that we solicit to this area. Such as Kraft Foods, Thermo Fisher Scientific, Eighty-Four Lumber, American Woodmark. These companies create new jobs. These new jobs are filled by new employees. New employees most with families and pay taxes and purchase homes in the area that also pay Frederick County taxes. At least that is what WWW yesfredericva.com webpage says. The same webpage also suggests that under the living here column, that public K through twelve education is an area where our youth can excel. But then I changed my mind. Then this afternoon, I went to Frederick County Public Schools annual employee convocation. You see every year, about a week before our schools or students enter our doors, our school board brings us together to share a special message. That we can carry into the new school year. I know to some of you it may sound corny, but I really try to follow that message going into the new year. As I drove home thinking about this supervisor's meeting, it dawned on me to share this message with you. This year, the message was creating connections for success. I share this message with you because I feel you need to be reminded of creating successful connections between supervisors. School board, students and families of Frederick County. I quote, "Connections and great communications lead to relationships. Relationships build trust. Trust leads to support. Support leads to success." I hope you use your connections and lead to a huge success in building a brand new Robert E. Ailer Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eva Stein.
Hello, I'm Eva Stein and I live in the Pecking District. I'm eight years old and I'm in third grade at Middletown Elementary School. I'll be a sixth grader at Ailer in the fall of twenty twenty-one when the replacement will open if approved tonight. On Monday night, my family adopted a puppy. I decided to be at this meeting tonight instead of playing with my new puppy right now because it's important to be here to show support for the replacement Ailer. Thank you for letting us students speak for our school. Please hear our voices and give us a replacement Ailer that we can be proud of.
Well done. Thank you for your comments.
Brian Nury.
Readjust. Hello, this is my second time before you guys. My name is Brian Nury. I'm represented by the Apeckin District. This whole situation has made me think about with beginning of school and everything, when my mom would take me out shopping for school clothes. I never got the clothes that fit. Because mom do, as a growing kid, I was gonna go through gross spurts. And if I listened to my mom and picked the right clothes, by Christmas, my clothes were fitting just fine. It sometimes pays to listen to people who sometimes you don't agree with. And you never agree with your mother as you're shopping for school clothes. The same is going on here. We're seeing a huge amount of growth in our county. Do we want to buy the jeans that we need now? Or are we gonna buy the jeans that we need for a couple of years down the road? In twenty fourteen, we even saw that we were preparing for this expansion soon enough. In twenty fourteen, we'd appropriated twenty-five million dollars to renovate Ailer Middle School to have it done by last year. That was a renovation. Contractors have been brought in several times and have noticed there's no way to renovate this place. We need to replace it entirely. So already, we're twice what we should have, what we could have spent for half the job as was brought up earlier. And in reference to what Mister Dunn has asked several times at the meetings and at the joint hearing. He was talking about the square footage of a hundred fifty-five square feet per student versus a hundred and seventy-seven, where the standard is only a hundred and thirty-one. We keep bringing up Brambleton Middle School. Brambleton Middle School is a twelve hundred student school. And the state Board of Education has a different standard for that. Only a hundred and twenty-one square feet per student. So we can't use this metric. And as we were brought up, as was brought up earlier or Monday by Doctor Orndoff. The minimum square footage capacity is only the place to start. It's not the place to finish. Again, we need to prepare for the expansion that we're gonna have, not just what we're going to be using. Because as Paul Abernson brought up, the numbers that we publish are indicators, not arbiters. They're not quote-unquote correct in the sense that if you're spending more or less, something is wrong. And that seems to be the crux of this whole situation, that we're spending the wrong amount of money. In terms of education, there is no wrong amount of money to spend. There is no zero sum, as was brought up two weeks ago. It's not a negative, which is not a zero, to spend any money. Every survey done on education has shown that every penny turns back multiple times over. So in conclusion, I would just like to remind us, let's not buy the jeans that will fit us today. Let's buy the jeans that will fit us going down the road. We need a larger school and we need to fully fund the fifty-four million. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sean Graber.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I am from the Back Creek District. Would like to share a little bit of our budgets. You folks slaved tirelessly in the spring to set a budget and to follow a budget throughout the year. If memory serves me correctly, the school board has asked for a budget amendment each year for the past three years, this being no exception. This year's budget amendment however, is an exceptionally high one, in the forty-five to fifty-two million dollar range. Just to refresh your memory a bit, the county is currently a hundred and twenty-six million dollars in debt. If we fund all of the wants of the school board over the next five years, it will add up to an approximate two hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. The county is currently paying off twelve million dollars of debt per year. If we continue at that rate and do not raise taxes, it would take us thirty-three years to pay off the anticipated debt that the school board would like to lay upon our shoulders. To me, that is not acceptable. To not only burden my generation, but the next generation with taxes that they didn't have an opportunity to vote on. So I have a couple of solutions I brought with me. The first one is, is Mister Lamanna on July the twenty-fourth at a joint work session made a comment that he's not sure. He knows that the county doesn't have the money, quote-unquote, to throw towards this. I would like to ask him where he could cut his budget so we could fund this down the road. And secondly, I'd like to see us possibly put some ballots in our second half real estate taxes. I hear all these folks who state that they are willing to pay more in taxes. I think a very simple solution is, and I've done some research here on this, the state and federal government does allow you to contribute more in taxes than what your tax bill is. If you would so desire to have the school, I submit that the county put in with all the second half real estate taxes. A voucher that asks each taxpayer how much additional they'd be willing to pay for the next thirty-three years to pay off these funds, these schools. If it's ten percent, if it's twenty percent, if it's forty percent, let them fund it. And for those fine folks who agree to pay that additional, don't let them leave and just shuck their responsibilities in two years when they moved to Loudoun County as a teacher. Or Fairfax County. Let's make that thirty-three-year commitment. Because it's not a one-year commitment. It's not a two-year commitment. It is a lifetime commitment of almost four hundred million dollars until it's paid in full with interest. So let me just ask you a question. It seems to me that we are going down a socialist road where we are willing to spend other people's money. If we look at Detroit, we see how that ends. It ends in bankruptcy, where we can't even pay teachers' pensions in retirement. That's where we're headed, my folks, if we continue down this path. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Amber Wallen.
Hi, my name is Amber Wallen. I am from the Apeckin District. Just as Miss Katie struggled to decide what to focus her comments on, I'm sorry, so have I. Over the past few months, I've spoken about so many different aspects of why a hundred and sixty thousand square foot Ailer is a functional and practical necessity. I came here feeling ill-prepared to use my three minutes effectively and felt guilty, thus this happened. These three minutes are, in my experience, so valuable. But with all the Ailer supporters, I'm not sure what new information I can provide to add discussion that hasn't already been brought up. We've had discussion in detail, questioned, reevaluated and further clarified so many different things. We've talked to student needs, talked about dollars and cents, growth, educational practices, project scope, legal guidelines, best practices and so much more. The vast majority of community supporters have been here and time and time again, had added to the conversation. And we've brought others to speak too. That's as far as I got, because I was ill-prepared. This is about my kids. It's about other people's kids. I understand the finances. But it's so hard to take my kids home every night and to try and explain to them. And we've taught taxes, we've talked to these other things, and they're trying to come down. An answer when I don't have the answers anymore. Why, why we can't get adults to see what's so clear to so many children? And I'm sorry about this. This is highly unprofessional. I did not intend to do this. I am not employee. I'm not. Pwned by the school district to do this. I'm an emotional overtired mother who doesn't know how to fight a battle for my children anymore. And so I plead with you, please, please, give us what we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other folks signed up.
Thank you. You want to close the public comment portion? What supervisors' comments are there any?
Mister Chairman, I just have one since my name is. So you just need to know that, and the population for Brambleton was thirteen thousand, one thousand three hundred and fifty-four. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. That'll bring us to county officials. Supervisor Trout.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I want to disclose for the record relative to this item and pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act. That I am employed by Frederick County Public Schools as a teacher and therefore I'm a member of a group who are or may be affected by this item. And that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively and in the public interest. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. So item number one under Tab East Amendment to the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen fiscal year budget. Supervisor Lofton.
Mister Chairman, FMA, I have to move that the Board of Supervisors approve a resolution for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Budget amendment for the school construction fund supplemental appropriation. In amount of forty-five million, five hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of land, design and construction of a replacement Robert E. Ailer Middle School.
Perd the motion is our second.
Second, Mister Chairman.
And the second. Is there any discussion? Anyone?
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we vote, I'd just like to express my thanks to the school board, especially the board chairman, the superintendent. If we take a step back and look at the roles of the various boards in our government and how they were set up. It should come as no surprise that our school superintendent would try to get the very best for our children. His job is regardless of the cost to determine what the superintendent feels is the very best for our kids. Doctor Lamanna at Monday's meeting was accurate when he said it's up to the school board to determine what we can afford. So I think it should come as no surprise that the superintendent and the school board says we believe that this is the very best. Now the question is posed to the board supervisors is what is the best that we can afford, knowing what the target is? So this is the way that our government is set up. We have two boards. One that is looking for a particular need or desire and another who has to balance that need or desire with all the needs and desires of all the other people. And I just want to say that I think regardless of how painful or difficult this has been for folks in the community to go through. This is the way that our government has set up the process. In a democracy, we have to have checks and balances and that means that there's gonna be some conflict. And I honestly believe what one of the other school board members said the other night, that everyone is trying to do the very best that they can. So I just want to thank the school board and the superintendent for doing your job and trying to figure out what the best is. And I hope that this board will do their best to figure out whether we can afford what they consider to be the best. Thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mister Chairman, the only thing that I would add to that is certainly say the same thing. Thank you all for participating and being a part of the community. As should be no surprise as to where Supervisor Wells stands on this issue. Just based on personal and my construction background, I know that we need a bigger school. Watching what's going on in my district. By the time Ailer is completed, it will be full. And we should, you know, I would like to see us move ahead with the larger square footage. And develop the cost to maintain that and build that, construct that. However, if it doesn't seem to me that the one or two votes shot of doing that. So you back up and you say do the best you can with what we have. But I do appreciate all the input and all the hard work. It's not easy. And just wanted to pass that out to the folks that have attended so many meetings. Thank you.
Supervisor Lofton.
Mister Chairman, for people to know, I make this motion tonight. Because the information presented by the school board in January, and again Monday evening. Indicates that forty-five point five million dollars will build a school with a capacity of nine hundred students. Which actually exceeds the State Department of Education standards.
Any other comments, anyone?
Mister Chairman.
Supervisor Trout.
I would just like to echo Mister Wells in that I also agree that as our county continues to grow, we should be building a hundred and sixty thousand square foot school for fifty-two million. And hopefully we can get there in the future after tonight. Additionally, I do want to also thank all of the constituents for their persistence and perseverance in continuing to come to these meetings. And continuing to tell us your concerns and advocate for your children. I really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Other comments, anyone?
Mister Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
We're having a conversation today. We're gonna have the same conversation next year, the year after, and the year after. So just let me go through some of my concerns. Last year, we appropriated twenty-seven million dollars for a new twelfth elementary school. This year, right now, it will be forty-five and a half. Next year, it's a new high school for eighty-three million. The following year, it's nine point eight million for a renovation on Armel. And then the following year, twenty twenty-one, there's James Wood High School for fifty-five million and Shurando High School for fifty-nine and a half million. The total cost of those, if you just simply add them up, is two hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. When you add in the cost of interest to pay those loans back, the cost is four hundred and two million dollars. Our current debt of general obligation bonds and lease bonds is a hundred and twenty-six million. When you throw intergovernmental and local, the total county debt principal only is a hundred and thirty-five million. And to pay that back is a hundred and seventy-seven million. So just to put the perspective on what's being asked here, that's a variation. This year, FY nineteen, it will cost us fourteen point nine million to pay for the school debts. And that's a good use of money. But when you add in the expected future costs. By twenty twenty-seven, FY twenty twenty-seven, beginning in July of twenty twenty-six, that cost rises by twenty-two million dollars. And the question is, how do we pay for that? One option is gonna be for increasing real estate taxes. One option is gonna be, which I'm gonna come back to in the fall, on revising the profit system so that those profits can be revised to help cover the capital costs. The question then, I would also pose to everyone here is, are the ways that those numbers which I just cited can be revised or cut? For example, if new school construction were postponed, I'm not talking about Ailer, I'm talking about beginning next year. If new school construction were postponed for two years, that saves approximately twenty-two million to twenty-three million dollars in principal. That's just one thought. Can the school board surplus items that they do not need? That's a thought. And there may be some others. So we will chat some more on this in the coming year. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Any other comments, anyone? I have to say that I think it's blatantly wrong to build a new middle school with a capacity of less than nine hundred. Any other comments? Ready to vote? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Schlotter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and motion carries. Alright, committee appointments. Historic Resources Advisory Board, we have an application pending.
No, sir, we do have an applicant, Mister Cant, who is in your agenda packet and he is eligible for appointment.
How would the board like to handle this one? I'd have to suggest that he would be, make a solid member, I believe.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Dunn.
I read the reports, that I'll make the nomination.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Canfield's pointing to Historic Resources Advisory Board. Conservation Eastman Authority would like to wait on that one. Economic Development Authority.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have contacted the two members who are, whose terms are expiring. And both have expressed a desire to continue to serve on Economic Development Authority. And so with that, I would recommend that Heather McKay and Bob Clayder, if I may do both of them together. Or would you rather have them separately? Let's do them separately.
They're not up.
Economic Development Authority?
No, I'm at Conservation Eastman Authority. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you. I need to follow the program.
We'll get you up.
Sorry, thank you.
So. Let's just wait on those three. Okay? So now Economic Development Authority.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have contacted Mrs. Heather McKay and Bob Clayder. They do desire to continue to serve on the Economic Development Authority and they have been good members, good input, good discussion. And so I would recommend that both Mrs. McKay and Mister Clayder be reappointed to the Economic Development Authority.
Perd the motion is our second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Ms. McKay and Mister Clayder are reappointed. Agency on Aging is September, let's hold off. Northern Shandau Valley Regional Commission, that's also September, so let's wait on that one. That'll bring us to a public hearing, a outdoor festival permit request to the Rotary Club of Winchester.
Yes, Service Chairman.
Attorney, thanks, sir.
This is a request to hold the forty-third annual Shandau Valley Apple Harvest Festival. The dates of the proposed event would be Saturday, September fifteenth, from ten to five. And Sunday, September sixteenth, from ten to five, on the grounds of Frederick County Fairground. The event's been held there at least the last couple of years without incident. And I believe that applicant is represented here if there's questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything applicant would like to add? Alright, how would the board like to handle this one?
Mister Chairman, I would move for approval for outdoor festival permit request. I'm sorry.
Sorry?
It's a public hearing.
Yes, I'm sorry. It is. Hold that thought. It's a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed festival permit? Anyone at all? Hearing none? Thank you.
Mister Chairman.
Supervisor.
I would move for approval of outdoor festival permit for the request of the Rotary Club of Winchester forty-four, forty-third annual Shandau Valley Apple Harvest. For September fifteenth with the rain date of September sixteenth. And that's my motion.
Perd the motion is our second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Outdoor Festival Permit of the Rotary Club is approved. That will bring us to Planning Commission Business, public hearings resoning zero-one-one-eight. Perkins?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to rezone four parcels of land that total eighty-eight point nine acres from the RA Rural Areas District to the M-one Lighten District, excuse me, Industrial District with proffers. Now, the site is located at the southern terminus of Lenore Drive. I can direct you to the screen on your left. Subject properties are outlined in yellow and black, as you can see here, and then you have Lenore Drive and then Route thirty-seven. With this application, they have proffered to limit the site to eight hundred and twenty thousand square feet and solely used for warehousing or high cube transload and short-term storage. Proffered conformance with the GDP, maximum height of sixty feet, dedication of the Route thirty-seven right-of-way, which is a little over seventeen acres, ten cents per square foot to fire and rescue. They have also proffered that no above-grade improvements within the area shown for the proposed slip ramps, provided that access is not impeded or eliminated. They're also dedicating that right-of-way at the terminus of Lenore Drive for the construction of the access to Route thirty-seven, which is the slip ramps. And just to point out the location of those, again, the subject properties, Lenore Drive, and then right here, as shown on the map, is slip ramps. They've also proffered two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for transportation planning, right-of-way acquisition, acquisition or construction. They're also proffering a historic American building survey for the historic property on the house, as well as inspection before demolition of the house. Planning Commission held a public hearing for this at their July eighteenth meeting, and they did recommend approval. So that staff is seeking a decision from the board on this rezoning request. I'm glad there's any questions. Mr. John Bishop is here if you have any transportation questions, and the applicant is represented by Mr. John Foot. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Perkins, anyone? Anyone? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Foot, sir? It's a pleasure.
Chairman? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Williams and Mr. Tierney. My name is John Foot with Walsh Calucci, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you know that it is a special pleasure for me to come out here. You know, and perhaps Mr. Lofton is aware, that I've been coming out here since I first went into private practice back in nineteen eighty-nine. And my first case that I ever handled was here in Frederick County. So I've been visiting this community now for more years than we're gonna count. But, and it's always been a pleasure to come out here for the simple reason that this is frankly one of the most civilized places that I do business in all of Virginia. I am here obviously representing Equus, which it used to be known as BPG back before it changed its name into a name nobody can spell anymore, just like they can't spell Calucci or Lubeli in my firm's name. It is a company that has been working in this community now since, well, back in the mid-two thousands. It has been investing in your community now since, I think, John, I believe that the rezoning originally up in Route eleven was done in the mid-two thousands, two thousand and five to two thousand and eight. But the recession occurred. But did BPG slash Equus abandon Frederick County? The answer is it did not. It stayed with you, and in two thousand and eleven, it constructed its first warehouse up on two thousand, up on eleven, and it's been successfully occupied since that time. Did it stop there? No. It came down to the Stonewall Industrial Park, and I believe that you know it has now successfully built three occupied buildings in Stonewall Industrial Park. Each of those is a warehouse similar to that, which is proposed here. And by that, what I mean is, it's what we call a high-end warehouse. So that is to say, it's very technologically advanced. It's not one of those produces a great deal of traffic because of what it stores. It's not like an Amazon distribution facility that produces hundreds and hundreds of trips of stuff moving out to be eventually droned to your home, but right now is delivered. And so it is in fact similar to that which we're going to see proposed here this evening. It has built three of those, and this is why we call this Stonewall Four. Not a very difficult concept to grasp there. Every piece of property has a story, just like any case in law has a story. And of course, every story has a person associated with, and property has a name. It's associated with something, and we know this is the Morris property. And the reason for that is because Cheryl Morris is here. Cheryl, raise your hand. Because that's the Cheryl Morris that is the Cheryl Morris property. She is the seller in this thing, we are contract purchasers, and this, of course, is me and the royal we. I don't have a dime in this thing, we're gonna say. But it's her property, and this is a piece of property that has been planned for industrial use now for quite some time in your comprehensive plan. Because if you look at it, and you know I don't know how to do this, we've had this conversation before. It's easy as it can be, thanks. Candace and I have had this dance. Does this work? We've always had this discussion whether I can make this work. All right, I just want to, oh, yeah, yeah. This property right here is the logical final extension of the Stonewall Industrial Park. It's why this board, some years ago, chose to plant it for industrial purposes. There is no other parcel that can be added to the Stonewall Industrial Park, this is it. It's the last piece on Lenore Drive, which you know is this, is Lenore right here. The salient points I want to make about the case upon which Candace has touched is that not only do we receive approval from the Planning Commission after a hiccup, which you're probably familiar, where we got delayed forty-five days at the Planning Commission, the commission ultimately voted unanimously to recommend approval to the board. There were a couple of reasons for this, one of which is that we made changes to the proffers between the first hearing and the second. But more importantly, even since then, and at the Planning Commission's request to some extent, but also at request of others, the, originally there was a proposal to provide a quarter of a million dollars to the county for transportation planning. There was a request that that be made into a lump sum, and also that it be paid not, it was originally thirty cents a square foot as Equus was building the development. But that might not ever have come out. Suppose it only built one of the buildings of the two that are conceptually proposed. Well, Lequis is prepared to pay the county a quarter of a million dollars upon the issue and so the first occupancy permit for the first building. So the county is assured of that quarter million dollar contribution. The other question was, could it be effectively unrestricted? I think what I told the Planning Commission was, you could use it for a party as long as I got invited. And that was pretty much where I ended up with it. So you can use it for right-of-way acquisition, you can use it for planning, you can use it for construction, whatever you choose to do. It is technically not isolated or restricted to the Stonewall Industrial Park. If that's what the board chooses to do with it, the board may make that choice. This is a quarter of a million dollars that's related to development of industrial park, but it didn't have to be used that way if the board didn't choose to do that. There's also additional fire and rescue money that's been proffered, along with the escalation clause that you expect to see in these. The money that's proposed for the fire and rescue contribution is actually what we went back and found in, I think, the last industrial rezoning that the county approved. We had to go back and find one to see how you'd handle that, so we mirrored that in this one. One of the issues, of course, that's been under discussion is the traffic that might be affected because we know the traffic is imperfect at Stonewall Industrial Park. You can't go out there, as I think maybe all of us have done, and know that it's not the smoothest, easiest traffic load that you can find. But as one of the people with us here this evening, of course, as most of you know, John Callow with Kittleson, who is the traffic engineer that studied this, and of course, Mr. Bishop has looked at it as well, is that the traffic analysis demonstrates that because this is a high-end warehouse, the trip generation from this is quite low. In fact, after we did the traffic analysis, the Institute of Transportation Engineers produced the tenth edition of its manual for trip generation. And that actually reduced the trip generation from the kind of warehouse that we've proffered to build such that the trip analysis that was done in the TIA is actually shows more trips than we're actually gonna produce. So the trip analysis indicates, the fact is, we're gonna have less impact on the intersections than we're even analyzed. So we, and even given that, the analysis that was done, approved by Vida, and I believe accepted by John, shows that we'll have no degradation on any of the intersections that exist. So while it's not perfect out there by any stretch, this proposal will not further degrade any of the intersections that are out there today. So, and in fact, I think one of the things to ask, and you must ask yourself this, is if this was a problem before, and we don't doubt it's been a problem for years, I've been working in this area, as you know, for a long time, then you have to ask why the county would want to continue the planning of this property for industrial uses for as many years as it has. So we submit that when we came in, we looked at the planning as we were contemplating how to use the property. Once again, the royal we. We also took into consideration the potential for the slip ramps that Candace has attempted to draw here. We know that Mr. Bishop has told the Planning Commission that the county is looking at the possibility of a smart-scale project to see if that can be funded in some way to prove. It'll take time, to be sure. But what we can do is that what we can do is agree to contribute the right-of-way that we control. That there's a triangle of property here, right here, which is not controlled by Equus. That's owned by another party. And so we don't have right-of-way that we contribute to there. If we did, if we did, we would. But we'll give all the right-of-way that's necessary as a free contribution upon request from the county. Also remember that where you show the future Route thirty-seven bypass, Equus is prepared to dedicate almost over seventeen acres at no cost to the county for the future construction of that portion of that intersection upon request of the county, free of charge. So, so you're, there's a lot of right-of-way that's to be valued at fair market value that would be contributed in due course as well. If the ramps can be approved in due course, then we will also assure you that we will do nothing, construct nothing in the area of the ramps that would preclude their construction in due course. We also, as a closing, a couple of closing comments, I would say, we know, and you know because you received a letter from Mr. Reinhardt, that the inland port is constantly looking for businesses to locate in this area that can feed business to the inland port. And that generally is these kinds of warehouses, because they're looking for Home Depot, for example, to store stuff and put it on the inland port so it can be taken to ship. And you've received a letter of support from the inland port to that effect. In closing, what I would say is that Equus has spent a great deal of money in this community, bringing a great deal of money to this community, a great deal of revenue to the county at virtually no expense to the county. We would respectfully ask your favorable action on this rezoning. I'll answer any questions you may have. Mr. Callow is here. John Knott, whom you may have met before, Mr. Knott is here, he is a senior executive with Equus. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Are any questions, Mr. Foot, or Mr. Callow, or Mr. Knott? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I would erase this if I could, but I can't.
Miss Candace, take care of that. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed rezoning, number zero-one-one-eight, Stonewall Four? Anyone? Yes, sir, if you'd come forward, share your name, Magisterial District, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Good evening. My name is Jack Drumheller, I live in the Stonewall District.
Oh, Mike.
There you go, Mr. Drumheller.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I am a lifelong resident of Winchester Frederick County. I've lived on Starrett Lane for over thirty years. During that time, I have seen a tremendous change in the traffic pattern there. Currently, there's still construction, there's new construction being built there. I believe there's a new hotel going in there. There have been some improvements made fairly recently to the intersection. But I would invite any of you all that have not traveled that road during rush hour traffic in the morning or in the afternoon to do so, because there are still many challenges there. There's still a lot of, there's still several properties in Stonewall Industrial Park that are for sale, that can be built on. Right now, there is one way out of Stonewall Industrial Park, and that is on Welltown Pike. I am not opposed to the rezoning. I would ask you to seriously consider whether this should take place and construction should be built before the ramp is actually built to give another way out of the industrial park. Setting aside seventeen acres is certainly a generous proffer, but coming up with the money to fund that ramp will be a very difficult challenge, whether it's roads in the county, schools in the county. Coming up with that money is a lot more difficult. So there will be degradation to that intersection with more traffic, and there is more that's available to come in the industrial parks. So before approving the rezoning, I ask you to consider when that ramp will be built. And I think it's prudent that the ramp is built before construction is allowed to begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drumheller. Anyone else like to speak concerning this rezoning? Anyone? Last call? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion, Stonewall.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And I do appreciate the public comments this evening, so thank you for coming out. Also, I appreciate you, Mr. Foot, as well. I will say that I do have concerns about this rezoning, and that is transportation. I know that, having served on the Transportation Committee, we are working diligently to address the Welltown area. And it is very high on our list. However, as Mr. Foot has pointed out, you have added tremendous assets to our community as well. Unfortunately, the transportation has not kept pace with where we would like to see it. With that, I would make a motion to approve this rezoning, zero-one-dash-one-eight, for Stonewall Four, and give you my assurance that we will continue to work as hard as we can to get the dollars to Frederick County to address these needs.
Thank you. We've heard the motion is our second.
Second.
Second, discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy?
I'd just like to say that anytime I see rural property going to industrial or commercial property, it makes me a little sad, because growing up in Frederick County, I remember a time when, you know, we had one or two grocery stores, and you'll get run in the fields, and there are actually apple orchards here in the apple capital of the world at the time. But having said that, that sadness is mitigated by the fact that I think if we have to have growth, I'd rather it be this type of growth that's going to be a net gain to the county versus, say, twenty or forty single-family residences going up on the same property. I think it's an appropriate place to put this. It's within the comprehensive plan, and it's adjacent to existing industrial property. So I will vote in favor of this. I also wanted to say, Mr. Foot, I truly appreciate, when it comes to proffers, working with honest brokers, people who are straightforward with us, are looking out for a win-win for the residents of Frederick County. So to you and your client, I say thank you very much for being flexible with the way you've worked on this and for being honest brokers and how you've handled that. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Other comments? Anyone? Are we ready? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells? Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Bring us to an ordinance amendment, shipping containers. Mr. Klein?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board of supervisors. This is an item for discussion this evening, and it's a proposed amendment to chapter one sixty-five, the zoning ordinance, to prohibit the use of shipping containers as accessory storage in certain zoning districts. The current zoning ordinance does not specifically address shipping containers as accessory storage. This item was previously discussed by the Planning Commission on April the fourth, and it was discussed by the Board of Supervisors on May ninth. The Board of Supervisors directed staff to take the item back to our Development Review and Regulations Committee for additional revision. The D R R C discussed the comments from the Board of Supervisors at their May twenty-fourth and June twenty-eighth regular meetings, and made additional revisions to the proposed text based on the feedback received from the Board of Supervisors. The D R R C at their June twenty-eighth meeting recommended the following on the use of shipping containers as accessory storage. In no case shall a shipping container, i.e. a prefabricated steel shipping box, be allowed as an accessory use or storage in the RP Residential Performance, R four Residential Plan Community, or R five Residential Recreational Community zoning districts. It further specified that shipping containers are allowed in all other zoning districts as an accessory use or storage, and should meet the applicable setback requirements for accessory uses. Again, this proposed amendment would not preclude the use of shipping containers in the RA Rural Area Zoning District or in the county's business and industrial zoning districts. The Planning Commission discussed this item on July the eighteenth and recommended that it go forward to the Board of Supervisors for additional discussion. Again, this item is presented to you all this evening for discussion, and staff is seeking direction from the Board of Supervisors as to whether this item is ready to be sent forward. And staff is seeking direction from the Board of Supervisors as to whether this item is ready to be sent forward to a public hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Klein, anyone?
No, just a couple of comments, if I may.
Supervisor Slaughter.
I I just would like to thank Mr. Klein for all the hard work on this to to try to get it to the place where I think it is now. And I it it certainly seems more acceptable to me that the areas that that these particular containers would not be useful. So, thank you, sir, and your department.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Mr. Klein. The way the ordinance is currently ordered, it says that in the RA Districts, shipping containers would be allowed as secondary use or storage. Are there any other potential uses that would be excluded by the language that is in this current proposal?
They currently wouldn't qualify as a residence. You couldn't place a shipping container on your property and use it as a residence. That would be another area where it would be precluded.
Is that the only one that you're aware of as far as precluded uses?
That's the only one I can think of off the top of my head. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Klein. Prior version of the ordinance made an attempt to restrict their use in the RA District in rural area subdivisions, which are specifically subdivided to be residential lots. So what was the reasoning behind removing that?
The committee discussed that comment that was made at the Board of Supervisors meeting on May ninth. And the, I guess, the the feeling among the committee members was that they should address the issue that was brought to their attention, which was the conflict of shipping containers in our planned residential communities, specifically in the RP, R four and R five districts. And that body, the D R C, could not come to a consensus on an appropriate acreage or a limitation in the RA District. So they decided that since it had not been an issue in the RA presently, to not preclude their use.
I think that's a mistake. I'm pretty adamantly opposed to allowing them on rural areas subdivision that were specifically subdivided as residential lots.
And we would be happy to make any changes to the proposed text based on this discussion, if there's consensus among the board, and we can have that prepared for the
See if we can find consensus. Any other comments, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, just a question.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Mr. Klein, how many complaints has the department received with regard to containers on RA District lots?
As far as I'm aware, we have not received a complaint about shipping containers on RA lots. We did receive some inquiries regarding their use on in planned residential communities, but not in the RA District.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? All right, so we're looking for an answer about whether it's ready to be moved forward to public hearing or back to the committee for more work, or any other alternative that you might choose. Looking for consensus.
Say go back based on what you said to see if we can resolve some of the issues that the chairman was talking about.
Would that be back to the committee, or would you like the staff to bring it back with that change?
I think staff. I I think staff could probably handle that. That's my thought.
I think staff should should send the draft back forward for discussion before it goes forward. That's for this body. Supervisor Lofton.
Sure, if I may, and reading the notes, it appears that the Planning Commission had concerns about not placing additional restrictions on the use of shipping containers as accessory storage on lots in the RA District. So I'm not so sure I can agree that staff should bring this back because it appears the Planning Commission had concerns about that. So if we're gonna think about changing that, I think it needs to go back so that it comes through the Planning Commission again so they can discuss and debate that.
I agree. That's what I meant.
Okay.
There you go. And they they had a proposed solution earlier that, while not perfect, addressed the vast majority of of the rural area subdivision lots.
Okay, but I I did not realize that you're too mad. I did not want us to
No, I want it to come back through.
The Planning Commission and the committees.
On its way to us, as always.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor.
I think I take a different perspective with regard to this. One of the questions that I have is when I, I believe I was at the Planning Commission meeting when this was discussed, at the last meeting. And the discussion of other uses beyond storage or accessory use, we didn't get beyond that. We discussed storage and accessory use within rural area subdivisions. My concern is that this also, in the way it's written, would restrict the containers being used for other types of purposes, similar to, you know, as an example, you had said is a residence, residential use. And I don't believe that that has come up as a discussion yet within the Planning Commission as to whether or not it's appropriate to restrict that or not. I I do know that there are good arguments in favor of allowing those in certain circumstances. So before we move forward with, in my opinion, a a new ordinance that would address a problem that doesn't seem to yet be a problem. I I would like to see us discuss whether or not it's appropriate to restrict those uses within the RA District. Not the not the RA subdivided district, but within the RA District.
Well, I'm talking about specifically rural area subdivisions.
I understand, I understand.
And that's the only place that I was referring to.
I understand. But I do think this goes a little bit broader than just that.
Current ordinance, I believe, would restrict them from being used as a residential unit.
I understand.
Regardless. And that's in place already. I don't think these proposals don't address that issue.
You are correct. They would be precluded from being a residence because they don't meet the Virginia Building Code. So they, that's
But could they be made to meet the Virginia Building Code?
Yes.
So my concern is this would actually be an affirmative ordinance that would say the only use is really, I could interpret this, to say that the only uses really are secondary or storage. So if a person could take a a container and make it meet the building code, it would seem that there may be a conflict with the way that this is written.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. It's either to you or to Mr. Klein. And that, Mr. Klein, for my indication, I understand what RA is, and I know I know what RP is. But can you define for me the difference between RA and RA subdivision, please?
In the rural area zoning district, you can have rural subdivisions, which are lots that are restricted to residential uses.
Okay, so if you have an area, this RA, but the owner of that land has said I would have potentially put houses on it. Is that the definition of the RA subdivision?
Generally, yes.
And that, and that, those?
Let me, let me see if this helps.
Go ahead.
We we have a buy right one to five, five acres.
It's in that.
Or or more. And there are plenty of them that are more than five for topography and wetlands and all kinds of other reasons. So what I was suggesting is not going to cover everything. You can also do the rural preservation option, where you set aside a large portion of it, and you can go down to two acres if you can get a well and perk site. So, I mean, the way it's brought to us today, you can put these things on two-acre lots in a rural area subdivision. But but they are a subdivision that's already been done and set up for residential specifically.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
I I think that our planning director wanted to speak to the issue as well.
I believe you covered what you were trying to get at there, and that's the rural area, of course, enables rural residential subdivisions to occur. And in those cases where they have occurred, I believe that's where you're directing the potential restriction.
Mr. Chairman.
That was fine. Supervisor McCarthy.
I I may be confused, but my understanding is that once the subdivision is done, the RA zoning would allow, you know, someone to use that same subdivided property, have the same types of uses within that property. So if I want to have a small micro farm in my backyard within an RA subdivided lot, I have the right to do that. So my concern is, you know, when we say that it's exclusively for residential use, I think that's not completely accurate because I can have, in today's world, a commercial farm operated on a two-acre or one-acre lot. And this would restrict my, if we go back and say we're going to restrict the storage capacity or the storage on two two-acre lots, it may solve one problem, which is you may not want to have your neighbor storing their motorcycles and things in a container on the backyard. But if I have a two-and-a-half-acre property, which I happen to, and I have a farm with an adjacent field that I have cattle, sheep on, and I want to put a storage facility on the two-acre parcel that happens to be well out of sight of the rest of my neighbors, I would be restricted from doing that if we put restrictions on those rural subdivided areas when, you know, I'm technically utilizing it in just the same way as someone who happened to take their two-and-a-half-acre lot and their ten-acre lot and merge them into a twelve-acre lot and can put a smack dab where they want to on their lot. So to me, I think there's, we're we're boxing with shadows. To my personal opinion is, you know, we're we're trying to solve a problem that hasn't become a problem yet, and we may be creating more additional problems as we get down the road. Thanks, sir.
If we don't permit rural area subdivided lots to be recombined.
I'm not saying we that we should.
I know, I I understand. Just refer to that potential, and we don't permit that. Okay. So we're looking for consensus. Hear any voices?
Mr. Chairman. Through staff, send it back through the process again to address the comments that are concerns that have been made.
Okay.
I'm I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
I think we have a consensus, Mr. Klein. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to item number two, ordinance amendment, storage facility self-service in the RA. We just did that one. Do we want to do it again? We actually, we combine these two?
No.
No, there are two items. The first was the use of shipping containers as accessory storage, and this is storage facility self-service in the RA.
Yes, okay. Now I'm with you. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. This is a proposed amendment to chapter one sixty-five, the zoning ordinance, to allow storage facilities self-service in the RA Rural Area Zoning District as a conditional use and to include additional supplemental use regulations. Under the current zoning ordinance, storage facilities self-service are allowed by right in the B two general business, B three industrial transition, M one light industrial, and M two industrial general zoning districts. The D R R C discussed this item on May twenty-fourth and recommended that the following additional supplemental use requirements for storage facilities in the RA zoning district. Sorry, okay. All developments shall conform to the B two general business district supplemental use requirements for self-storage unless the facility is screened by natural vegetation or topography, and that all development shall have direct access onto a state road. The Planning Commission discussed this item on July eighteenth and recommended it go forward for additional discussion by the Board of Supervisors. Staff is seeking direction from the Board of Supervisors as to whether this item is ready to be sent forward for a public hearing. Again, this item is presented for discussion, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Klein? One? Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Klein, if you may, are there large areas in the county that currently without this amendment would not be allowed to have these self-storage units? I'm trying to think of rural areas that that there may be a need, but maybe the zoning isn't there. Could you maybe highlight just a couple of areas where this would be useful?
Yes, sir. Under our present zoning ordinance, again, the this use, self-storage, is only allowed in our business and industrial districts. Under the, under the current zoning map, areas such as Gore, Star Tannery, areas near Mountain Falls, Wild Acres, and Shawnee Land presently lack property that is owned B two, where these facilities could potentially be located. Now, Gore, there's a few B two pieces, but they're in, some of the portions of those parcels are within a floodplain. So there's very limited opportunities for self-storage out in the county's rural areas. So that's that's where this this need has arisen.
So we're talking about the more rural outline areas that currently do not have the ability for self-storage units without this amendment?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Supervisor Dunn.
Mr. Lofton's comments, if you have an RA area and a person wants to set up self-storage, this ordinance change will allow that, correct?
Yes, sir.
My question is, why would not the person come back and just simply rezonate to B two or industrial something else? Because it it seems that's essentially what you're doing. So if one person simply wanted to put up one or two lots for his own use, that's one thing. But from what I'm reading here, unless I'm incorrect, it could be a business with multiple self-storage units for rent. So where's that different from just rezoning into into a business?
Well, this this item would be a conditional use, so it would require an application where they would come before the Planning Commission and public and Board of Supervisors for a public hearing, and they would be considered on a case-by-case basis. A rezoning would follow the same process, but under the requirements for rezoning, they would have to demonstrate that they conform to the long-range land use plan and those type of considerations where if they were located in the areas that were discussed under Mr. Lofton's comments, they would otherwise may not be supported for rezoning. So that would be difficult to achieve, potentially.
The common plan wouldn't support rural areas.
I'm thinking. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Anyone else? We want to send it forward to public hearing? We want to kill it? We want to amend it? That's the question.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
When I look at this, you know, when we look at conditional use permits as a whole, they typically tend to be someone has a particular structure or a particular use that they're currently using that they want to expand into something a little bit different. You know, I have a farm and I want to have an event center, so I want to use the buildings on my property that could be used for rural uses and use it for events or weddings. Or I have a country store that I want to expand a little bit because the people in my neighborhood need to have a little bit more access to something. So we're taking a current use that seems similar in most cases and transferring it into something that seems a little bit more commercial than the original use. This, to me, seems to be something where we're taking something that is rural agricultural land and transforming it dramatically into something that requires a lot of concrete and steel and things that will last for decades and decades. And the problem that I see with conditional use permits is if people aren't following their their proper uses, it's very difficult, once someone has put that much concrete and steel and money into the ground, to go back and tell them we're going to revoke that conditional use permit. So I'm opposed to something that would change the landscape that dramatically on something as whimsical as, you know, the seven of us sitting here and saying we will approve it or not approve it. I like, you know, Mr. Dunn brought up the suggestion that, you know, there's always the opportunity to rezone, and while it may not be in compliance with our current plans, if there's a great enough need, I'd rather see us go through that sort of exhaustive process of trying to figure out, is this really the right thing to do before we go pour tons and tons of concrete and steel into a location with the hope that everything works out. Thanks, sir.
Anyone else? Supervisor Lofton.
As Chairman to Supervisor McCarthy's remarks, I don't disagree that there obviously would be a change. What I'm looking at is, since this is a conditional use permit, we have the ability to determine site by site whether or not this fits into the community where they want to put it, put caveats on what they would have to do as far as making it fit into that niche. And so I'd like to hear what the people have to say about this, not that I would vote for, but I'd like to hear some comments from the folks that might be affected by it and hear what they have to say as far as whether they think it's a good idea or a bad idea. So that's why I sometimes like to send things to public hearing, because I like to get that input before I make a decision.
Got the comments, anyone? Supervisor Dunn.
Mr. Lofton, I understand your comments. The comprehensive plan basically talks about taking Frederick County, everything east of I eighty-one, being urbanized, everything west being non-urbanized. And what I see here is a piece-by-piece C U P or a piece-by-piece, yeah, C U P that makes it become more industrialized. So if the purpose of the county is basically trying to keep one area more urban and industrialized east and one area much more rural, so if you have exception after exception, you've destroyed what you're laying out as the big purpose. That's that's why I'd say if you really want to do that, come back and rezone, but I'm just not there on that score. And I understand your comments about public hearing. A quick question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Klein, have we had any, you know, significant, you know, more than one request for this type of thing? Was this coming from one person? Is it coming from multiple people? What generated this?
I believe it was a request. It had come to the Board of Supervisors previously in two thousand and fifteen and was denied, and it was asked by a board member through a planning commissioner to have that item come back forward for further additional consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. One more thought that comes to mind is if this does go to public hearing, I would at least, at a minimum, suggest that we revisit the idea of why are we limiting this to RA District? If I have a differently-zoned property that may just be just as suited to this type of use, doesn't it give the RA owner somewhat of an advantage to come before the board and only need to get a conditional use permit versus someone who's in a different area that would have to get a rezoning in order to do the same thing, which may be just as suitable? So my question is, why, why are we focused strictly on RA? In order to do the same thing, which may be just as suitable. So my question is, why, why are we focused strictly on RA? You know, if there may be other properties that could benefit from this as well. Thank you.
So my question would be, so that I understand. Other than the B ones, twos and threes, and the M ones and twos, the only other zoning districts are residential.
Right, but we're talking about RA specifically.
Yeah, we're talking specifically about RA here.
Yeah, so I'm just making a point of juxtaposition of, you know, we're making it easy for a particular class to get something done, whi- which we're not making easy for other people. And we're not requiring a rezoning, which would everyone else would have to get rezoned.
I I personally don't care at all about this, one way or another. I I don't think it serves any function.
Mr. Chairman, I feel like for good census, I mean, at this point in time, I would just say let it die.
We have one for public hearing, two for let it die. I don't know what the not not means.
That's yes for let it die.
I would go with public hearing.
That's two and three. I'll start writing it down. You have a view? I'm not pushing.
No, I guess the only view I have is in attending a lot of the planning commission meetings. I hear it time and time again that is a CUP appropriate? For something that someone is making a huge capital investment in, and so I to to Supervisor McCarthy's point. It would appear to me that there is a huge investment here, and so I'm not sure if it is appropriate. Rezoning, to me, would seem to be the better way to go, so I would say let it die.
Okay, that's four. So to to your point, though, for me, it it it's reached reached a point where. You're you're not, you're not going to be able to control it when the state code rules that they can expand by twenty percent. With no process. So there was a time when the CUP process added the potential for flexibility on a case-by-case basis. With good thought and insight, case by case, and when the state code overrides that with a twenty percent expansion, no process. I think it's out the window. All right, we're gonna let that one die, Mr. Klein, thank you, sir. Appreciate the committee's hard work, nonetheless. That will bring us to the board liaison reports, are there any?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that although we had a rainy week. The fair went on, it was a great fair. Uh, I got out there a couple of days, uh, I went out one time, it it rained me out before I could even get out of the truck. But it was a great fair, and I I just want to thank all of those people who participated. Young people and their parents and everyone else who supported that. That's a it's a just a great thing to go to in our community, it's so positive. It's just just fantastic. Uh, the other thing, I I got two uh very nice uh emails. From folks who were complimenting our police department on helping them while they were away on vacation. And had gone by their house to check and make sure things were, you know, still in order. And they took time to send me an email and say, you know, letting you know that was, they thought that was outstanding. That our police department was doing those kinds of things, so, just passing it on.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Supervisor Dunn?
Supervisor comments or still liaison reports?
Uh, liaison reports or supervisors' comments, I think it's already got mixed. Which would you like?
If it's supervisor's comments, then I do have a comment.
Well, are there any other board liaison reports? Supervisor Dunn, board comments?
So, Mr. Chairman, I sent all of you a memo last night late regarding the Carmus proffer. And I did that so you could have a chance to think through what I'd written. When we had this proffer issue um two weeks ago. We had a discussion on what the word only meant, we had a discussion on Monday through Friday, et cetera. And at that point in time, I might have been slightly distracted, but Mr. McCarthy, I looked, I went back and looked at the tape. And Mr. McCarthy was asking Mr. McCoch if only meant no work on weekends, no work on Saturday and Sunday. I apparently didn't hear that, but I was waiting for Mr. McCoch to include the words, we will not work on Saturday and Sunday. And if I looked at the at the tape, it said he would not. I voted in the majority on that issue, and for me, the trade-off was between that um weekend of no work versus the ten years. I contacted nineteen adjacent homeowners, and those nineteen sixteen are in favor of the two thousand and eighteen proffer. And one was ambivalent, two were either way. Those nineteen people are going to be directly affected, therefore, I would like to ask for a. And I'll defer to uh our attorney and parliamentarian on being at the right word. But I think it's the, I would like to ask for reconsideration of the vote. Should I make that as a motion, I believe I have to do that.
Don't think that's the proper word, Mr. Tierney.
Rescind?
Would be the motion.
That I would make a motion to rescind the previous vote um on July twenty-fifth on the Carmus proffer.
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Tierney.
Just, I think probably procedurally, should the board decide to do that. We would need to hold a new public hearing. I don't know if um if Mr. Dunn has been in contact with Carmus to.
I've not, I've not talked to Carmus since.
I guess the question would be whether they would still honor offers and the application and the details and such that have been worked out.
I believe Mr. McCoch is in the room right now.
Mr. Chairman, if I if I may, before. Mr. Tierney, I I'd like to know what procedure, what policy requires us to hold another public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, the board would be taking legislative action at that point without any notice.
So even though it's the same issue, we have to hold another public hearing when nothing has changed materially with the proffer amendments?
We don't even know that the applicant once reconsidered, I think was the point that Mr. Tierney was trying to make.
I can tell you that at the staff level, we had that discussion, and quite honestly, Mr. Lofton, I share some of your. Questions, but I'm relying on our legal counsel to give us advice as to what procedurally would be in our best interest. So that's where we stand.
The applicant is here, if you uh find out if he wants.
Not on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to amend the existing motion to rescind and set for public hearing at the most uh. At the soonest possible time, um, a public hearing on this matter, should the applicant wish to reconsider. Or continue to consider this proffer.
Mr. Williams? Were you okay?
I I think the motion's in proper order.
Okay, so.
Second.
Right, a second.
I'll 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 concord with that.
A second.
I'm seconding his amendment.
Post amendment, okay.
Would you restate that amendment?
To re- rescind the. Vote on this proffer amendment and set for public hearing a reconsideration of the original or the proffer as it was voted on at the last meeting. If the applicant is still interested in pursuing that proffer that we voted on.
With another public hearing is what I want to make sure of.
That's that's right.
That was part of the motion. I didn't hear a second.
Second.
And a second for Mr. Dunn, is there any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy. Supervisor Slaughter, Supervisor Wells, Supervisor Lofton. Supervisor Dunn. Supervisor Trout. Chair votes no, motion carries. We now have an amended motion. To send forward public hearing if the applicant is interested in pursuing. Accurate, we're all square. Ready to vote? Supervisor Trout? Supervisor Dunn? Supervisor Lofton? Supervisor Wells? Supervisor Slaughter? Supervisor McCarthy? Chair votes aye, the motion carries. All right, other board of supervisors comments, are there any? Anyone? Supervisor Lofton?
As chairman, I move.
Mr. Chairman, adjourn, but you forgot citizen comments.
I'm sorry. How did I do that? All I know, Supervisor Dunn wanted to top the head.
I'm sorry, Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
All on me, my fault, so we apologize. But is there anyone who would like to bring anything to the attention of the board, anyone at all? It's your opportunity, thank you, sir.
Alan Morrison from Gainesboro District, I'll promise to be brief with the last two meetings. Two things have come to me, really are worrisome to me. One is, we continue to build houses in Frederick County without sufficient regard to infrastructure. Be it schools, be it roads, be it foreign rescue. General Assembly did us a great disservice by rewriting the proffer laws. But what we typically end up doing is building a subdivision and then scrambling to try to find the funds. To make the services available to those people in that subdivision. And I really think we need to slow down and study a little bit how we can get ahead of this. Rather than constantly be trailing after that, and really, it causes distress with a great number of people. We are behind it and not ahead of it. The other thing is, every one of us in our private lives has to utilize our resources. As efficiently as possible. That should apply to every government agency as well. And I don't get that sense from what I hear going on in here. I don't know how we can get that. We can talk about it, we can write letters, but it's a culture that we have developed. That is not being followed very closely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any comment at all? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second? All those in favor, aye. Aye, close no, thank everyone for their time and attention and contributions and for being with us and. Forward to seeing you next time.